Test, 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 test. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, before I call this meeting to order, I would like to ask everyone to observe a moment of silence for our troops that were cowardly attacked and perished in an attack in Afghanistan, the 13 men and women of the military that perished because of that cowardly act. So let's have a moment of silence for them and their families. At this time, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Mr. Coppola, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We apologize for the feedback. Test, 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 test. Is it better now? Thank you, Mr. Coppola. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes to our agenda?
Yes, sir. On action item I, number 12.
I, 12?
And yes, sir, and number 17. Those both need to be tabled for our next regularly scheduled board meeting.
12 and 17?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that will be tabled. There's still a little bit of feedback, right, Juan? Okay, Chair, entertain a motion then to adopt the agenda with items, action items 12 and 17 being tabled to our next regular meeting.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Would the Chair like to allow to deviate?
Yeah, allow us to deviate too, so.
So amend the motion to allow the Chair to deviate?
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Our agenda is adopted. Next is call to the public. Mr. DeLuca, are you on the phone, sir? If you can unmute yourself, please, or if we can unmute him. If you are on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
There. Yes, yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. DeLuca.
Yeah, my name is Neil DeLuca. I live at 71 Colton Lane in Tubac. I'm calling concerning the flooding of the Santa Cruz River at Cheva sighting. Just as information, there's a number of elderly people on Colton Lane and the surrounding areas, including myself, with severe back problems. Now, the river is flooded. If the river is flooded, there's emergency. Nobody's getting up here, no medical equipment, no fire, no sheriff, no nothing. So this is my concern. So I would like to put this issue on your agenda for the next meeting to discuss more. I called the county numerous times, spoke to List of Valdez once, they dumped large rocks into the river, which is making it extremely difficult to cross. The railroad has given us permission to use their road bedding rock to put in the river to make it easier to cross, but nobody's taken action on this. And also, I did research, and there is grant money available through the state. It's called DEMA, Department of Emergency and Medical Affairs, state of Arizona, but somebody needs to file the grant. I can't do it. Nobody up here or around wants a bridge. There are many alternatives, a covert, a single lane, so we can get back and forth. I have a lot of information on it. I've also left the boy's mail with Mr. Bracker, and he never returned. You know, just want, you know, as you know, we are all taxpayers, and we deserve a little more concern on this issue, because we don't, we don't live in 1821, we live, you know, 2021, and, you know, it's not that big an issue. I also talked to the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers, and they recommended going to this DEMA site, and that's it. That's basically what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. And because it's under call to the public, we can't have any type of dialogue, so.
I lost you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the phone, under call to the public? I can't see the screen. I think that one's turned off, so. Is there anybody on here? I don't see any. Do you see any on there, Juan?
No, no one.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll move on then to Mary Dahl. Good morning, Mary. How are you?
Good morning.
Oh, yeah. How are you doing today?
I'm well, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Morning, Mary.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody. I'm just here to make a quick, brief report on the status of our CDBGCV CARES Act Emergency Rent Utility and Mortgage Assistance Program that's been going on since, since June. Going to throw a lot of numbers at you. As of today, when you're done hopefully approving the demands, we will have distributed just over $90,000 to 90 individual beneficiaries in the county, or about 32 families. Of those families, 18 show their residences being in Nogales, 12 in Rio Rico, and two in the Carmen-Tubac area. The household sizes range from one to six people. The age of the homes range from being built in 1925 to being built in 2013. Of the assistance that we've given, 21 electrical bills were brought up to date, nine gas bills, 15 water bills, 22 rent benefits were paid, and six mortgages. Next cycle, which is later on this month, we're hoping to distribute close to, close to $20,000 additional dollars. We've got about 23 new individual beneficiaries in the pipeline, nine families. As you know, just to review, or just to remind you, we did apply for a half a million dollars, and we received that grant from the Arizona Department of Housing for this CARES Act program. Eligibility is the same as for CDBG, which means that families just simply demonstrate that they are low to moderate income, which is very easy. There's a lot of need out there. And the additional qualification is that the need that the families have currently for help with their utilities, mortgage, or rent is, was caused by circumstances related to the pandemic. It could be that they themselves were sick, they cared for someone who was sick, they lost their jobs, their hours were cut back, or, you know, they had to, they had to stop working to stay home and care for kids who couldn't go to school, you know, the whole, the whole litany of problems that the pandemic has caused economically among our families. So we're, we're on our way. We have until May to spend this money, and, and we hope to spend it all. I want to make sure that if you know of property managers, we've, we've been working with a lot of the property managers that you, that you, you know, that I know of, but if you know of any others, make sure that they know that their tenants may well qualify for this program, and, and we'll be glad to talk to them. And then finally, I want to give a shout out to the Finance Department, because they have been so helpful and, and so instructional to us as we've moved through this process, making it a real partnership, which it has to be. So I really want to thank them and Jennifer for the support that she's given us with the program and Mauricio with his staff. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Well, because it's called to the public, Mary, we can't, but thank you. Okay.
All right.
Mr. Hayes. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Reese, members of the Board. Just here today to update you on a new project that we're taking on to study the possibility of Santa Cruz County providing electric vehicle charging stations at public facilities and locations within the county to help support the adoption of electric vehicles within the county. As part of this process, I've met with the City of Phoenix Electric Vehicle Program Manager, and learning that the city has, Phoenix has the following items. They have a legacy system that was provided for, for them by a company called Egotality at the time, which is a network system that allows them to track usage data at locations as well as providing data for future growth opportunities. They're putting together a committee at this time to study future siting and expansion of their program, which also includes the adoption of electric vehicle-ready building codes to require all new construction, at least stub out the necessary infrastructure for future charging stations, especially at new residential structures such as single-family residences and multifamily residences, as well as commercial locations. Their agreement with their provider basically is a hybrid model in terms of the spectrum between totally free to the public and totally being paid by the public, in which the user pays the cost for the charging. So what they have is, what happens is, the user is charged as a fee, and not from that fee, they're able to, the city gets, or the city gets reimbursed for all of the electrical charges. The provider collects all of the networking fees, and then anything that's left over is split 50/50 between the two. They also, in their agreement, the city preps the location in terms of preparing the pad and the conduit for the charging station. The provider provides all the equipment, they do the hookup, and everything else. So based on that conversation with the City of Phoenix, I'm going to be working on developing a request for information to gather input on business models and potential partnership opportunities for owning, planning, operating, and managing publicly and privately accessible electric vehicle support equipment or charging stations on county property, and plan to, plan for expansion of the program as electric vehicle ownership is, grows within the county and the usage of those vehicles grows. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So anyone else under call to the public? I don't see anyone else here in the audience. If not, then we will move on to current events. Board of Supervisors. Vice Chairman Bracker.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to adjust it.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reese. I hope everybody had a safe Labor Day weekend. I was, had the opportunity to attend the rodeo and fairgrounds, the rodeo in Sonoyta yesterday. They did a really great job. They, you know, they had great attendance all three days. The food vendors were selling out of food, so I really think people are looking for outdoor activities and places to go and things to do, so thank you very much, Rodeo and Fairgrounds, for the job they did. I've been working with Kevin Adams, Cigo, and the other rural COGS. They're trying to advocate with the state legislature for $50 million for rural counties for local projects, and so this is, would be a one-time allocation for local transportation projects. We're meeting with, one-on-one with state legislators and also with state senators. ADOT has updated us. They've said that the Ruby Road construction on the bridge is going to be finished by the end of the month, so that's going to be really good news for everybody who uses that intersection. And unfortunately for the people in East County who are looking for the weeds to be mowed, ADOT is going to wait until October so that the seeds and the weeds are dormant, so that when they mow them, they're not spreading new seeds for next year. So we have been in touch with them. They are waiting for October to start mowing. If there are issues with any intersections with line of sight, they will take care of that, so please contact me, and I will pass that on to ADOT. And Mr. Chairman, that's what I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chair, good morning.
Good morning.
I just have one item to report, is basically our bi-weekly meetings with ADOT and ADQ continue in reference to the asphalt plant. Apparently, they're working up north now towards the, close to Saguaro, and it's, they're in the final stages, so we're basically praying for them to complete this job and get out of here. And that probably won't happen until late October. They're, they're falling a little behind, and that kind of worries everybody, because if they fall behind and go into winter not completing the project, they'll have to come back in the spring and complete it. So we're praying that they do complete it in a timely manner, and that way our residents will go back to normal in that area. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Malletta. And just quickly, I want to remind our folks to please take care, if you're able to wear a mask, please wear a mask. We're not out of the woods with this COVID. I know that we continue to get anywhere from eight to 20, I think, that I've seen on the reports that Jeff has sent us. I know that since we had 181 people pass away because of it, now we've added six more in the last month and a half, maybe more or less. It's important that people get vaccinated. If you're not vaccinated, we're still waiting to get a report where I'd like to see children get vaccinated. They're the ones that are really, really being affected. And, you know, we just need to be as careful as we can so that we don't, we can stop the spread of this terrible pandemic, and so please wash your hands, if you're able to, wear a face covering even if you are vaccinated. You could still, you know, possibly wind up getting it, or if you're asymptomatic or whatever, you can still spread it if that, is that correct, Jeff? So please do that. And so, you know, the more we take care of ourselves, we get vaccinated, the quicker hopefully we can get back to normal as possible, so thank you. Madam Manager.
Good morning again. Over the last two weeks, as Supervisor Malletta mentioned, we've continued our meetings with ADQ and ADOT regarding the Fisher issue. Sonia and I also attended a quarterly health insurance poll meeting, and I attended a library board meeting, and that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you. Item E, Department reports, finances. Anyone, are you going to give the report?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So the general fund has a balance of $12,713,497, of which $10.3 million is invested. The road has a balance of $2,075,646, of which about $815,000 is invested. The flood has a balance of $2,241,651, of which just under $1.9 million is invested. And the jail district has a balance of $2,236,588, of which just over $1 million is invested. We have a total of all funds of $36,493,546, and a projected end-of-month balance of $9, 281,423.
Great. Thank you. Any questions of Jennifer's report?
No, sir.
Jennifer, thank you. This time, Chair, entertain a motion to recess and convene into Flood Control District.
So moved.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hayes, good morning again.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. You should have a copy of the report there in front of you. I have no changes to make to it at this time. I just do wish to highlight item number three, though, on the Effron Canyon project. Everything seems to be progressing as smoothly as it can go with the federal reviews, and we are hoping that they'll have a final decision by the end of this month.
Great. That will be welcome news. City of Nogales?
Did not receive a report from the City of Nogales.
Okay. Town of Patagonia?
Did not receive one from the Town of Patagonia.
I guess no news is good news, huh? I will open it up to the, to the public. So next month, will you give us some more rain totals? Because I know we've been doing pretty well, so.
Yes, sir. And the totals are in the report, items one and two.
I know, but I usually like for you to mention them to the, to the public.
Sure. And, you know, we've, for the month of, for the month of August, we ranged between 2.17 inches at Casablanca Canyon and State Route 82, to 6.75 inches at Penya Blanca Lake, which brings Penya Blanca Lake for the, for the monsoon up through August 31st to a total of 20.63 inches.
Wow.
And an average in the county of 12.97 inches across the county for the gauges within the county, keeping in mind that normal monsoon is 11 inches.
So we'll, hopefully we'll get a few, few, few more rains and keep adding to the totals, so thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, we're going to skip over the executive session. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn our Flood Control District and convene into the Jail District.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now convening to the Jail District. Item one, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with Trident Care to provide diagnostic screening services at the jail. Everything in order?
Yes.
Chair, entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion, possible action to approve a cooperative purchase agreement with Adani Systems for the purchase of Adani Compass Life Body Scanner for Adult Detention Service. Everything in order?
Yes.
Great. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Hear a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn our Jail District and reconvene regular session. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are now reconvened into action items. We'll try to get as many of these action items done before the 10 o'clock public hearing. Item one, discussion, possible action to author, for authorization to fill a senior court clerk position requested by the clerk of the Superior Court. To approve. Do I hear a second?
I will second, but I need a report from our court clerk.
Yes, sir.
They're going to make you work today.
That's fine, that's fine.
Never mind.
I want to say good morning to you.
Good morning, members of the Board, Chairman Reese, Supervisor Bracker. Am I forgetting someone? Good morning, Supervisor Malletta. Good morning. Again, the clerk of the court respectfully requests that you approve this position. It's been budgeted for, and unfortunately, we lost this person to Tucson, to Pima County, a wonderful employee, well-trained, had been with us for three years, but Pima County Court took her away from us, but we are, again, requesting to fill this position as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you. There's a motion and a second, all, all in favor?
Second. I mean, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you.
Okay. Item two, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill the soon to be vacated full-time Superior Court Judge pro tempore position. Everything in order there, too? Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three, discussion, possible action to approve the appointment, a precinct committee person for the Santa Cruz County Democratic Party, and that's Ashley A. Avila Nogalesate. It was requested by Frances Glad, Chairwoman, Santa Cruz County Democratic Party.
To approve.
Hear a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number four, discussion, possible action to approve letter of support to designate the village of Tubac as an international dark sky community. Vice Chairman Bracker.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reese. There's been a group of people in Tubac that have been working on a dark sky initiative for the Tubac area. Obviously, with the observatory just above Tubac, it is very important for them for sustainability of their operation, but also for tourism. It is a huge tourism draw to have these dark skies, so, and our view of the stars. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Hear a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item five, discussion, possible action to approve memorandum of agreement with South 32 Limited for the 2021-2022 school year funding for school superintendent A, the Tecnologicas Lift Program in the amount of $74,300. Item B, the elementary robotics after-school program in the amount of $43,704. Chair, entertain a motion.
To approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement for the 2021-2022 school year with a superintendent. And before I read them, I will just say for the record that I am a member of the Nogales Unified Governing School Board. I have no interest in it. I don't receive any benefit from it, just so that we can be clear. So item A, Nogales Unified School District Number One for Elementary Robotics After-School Program.
That would be huge, like you see in Las Vegas, it would be more like sports bars.
Oh, Manny.
Oh, we're, we're getting a meal from the international today. Woo-hoo. Okay, so Nogales Unified School District Number One Elementary Robotics After-School Program in the amount of $21,852. Item B, Nogales Unified School District Number One for the South 32 Hermosa Project Tecnologicas Lift Program in the amount of $15,800. Patagonia Elementary School District Number Six for the South 32 Hermosa Project Tecnologicas Lift Program in the amount of $7,900. Item D, Patagonia Elementary School District Number Six Elementary Robotics After-School Program in the amount of $3,642. Item E, Santa Cruz Valley School District 35, the South 32 Hermosa Project Tecnologicas Lift Program in the amount of $15,800. And item F, Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District Number 35 for the Elementary Robotics After-School Program in the amount of $10,926. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Association of County Superintendents effective November 15, 2021 through November 14th. Is that correct, 2031? Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Hear a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Item number eight, motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, discussion, possible action to approve proposals with the Southwest Educational Consulting Associates, Inc., SWECA, to provide evaluation, technical assistance, and support services from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. A, the Sea Creo Project for Janet Annette for up to the maximum of $12,000. B, the Sea Creo Project for up to the maximum of $70,000. And item C, the Department of Justice Stop School Violence Grant Number 2020YS-BX0022 in the amount of $22,800. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve items A through C.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, discussion, possible action to approve contracts with Southwest Educational Consulting Associates, Inc., SWECA, number 17M-SWECA-2115, to provide evaluation, technical assistance, and support services from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. A, special projects for up to a maximum of $25,000. A, special projects for up to a maximum of $25,000. And B, Los Padres Son Los Primeros Profesores Project for up to the maximum of $8,800. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve items A and B.
Great. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, chair, entertain a motion to recess and convene into our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now in a public hearing. Mr. Vasquez, good morning. Good to see you, my friend. Welcome, please. If you want to sit here and then go through, that's fine. That's good. That sounded so official, like me approached the bench. We felt like justices here, huh? Great. Thank you. So, you want to start us off, Jennifer, and then give it over to Michael? Or you want Michael just to go into the presentation? Michael, just go into our presentation.
Fairness, I should ask if your copies are, have been refilled. By the time we're done with this, I think you'll be hearing Etta James at last, so.
Go ahead. Good to see you, my friend. Please begin.
Likewise. So, we'll start off on page three. And, um, thank you very much.
And before you start, just let me read what this public hearing is about. It's a presentation per Arizona Revised Statutes, subsection 11391, on incurring a long-term obligation to fund all of the portion of the county's unfunded liabilities with respect to its pension plans in the Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. And this deals with our sheriff's deputies and correction officers, correct?
Correct.
Now you may proceed, my friend.
Thank you very much. So, the way that, that staff and I put this presentation together is in a very comprehensive way, and that means that we're not going to cover every page, but I'm going to try and cover the highlights, and then hopefully, when you return to review this, to try and make some more sense of it, those extra pages will help. So, U.S. pension backdrop. Why are we here? For a very, pensions have been around for a very long time, and for a very long time, they were doing well for a variety of different reasons. One, we were having very high performance results in the portfolio plans. We were having shorter, you know, lifespans, and, you know, other costs that were being provided through these plans were, well, less expensive than they are today. We saw, beginning in 2008, some challenges there when there was some big hits to some of the plans' portfolios, to their assets, to their earnings, and that along with people living longer lives, and again, people, you know, having to pay higher healthcare costs and so on, you know, there's be, well, we've come to find a larger gap than we would want. Additionally, to add to some of those causes, we had permanent benefit increases and poor investment returns, and those were significant factors in creating those unfunded liabilities. Let's go to page five, please. So, Santa Cruz County separated from everybody else. I think it's important to make this point. The amount of unfunded actuarial accrued liabilities, I'm going to refer to it as UAL from here on out, in Santa Cruz County's retirement plans was not caused by any action or failure to act on the part of the county. The county has always paid in full its annual required contribution, both normal cost and amortization in the UAL on a timely basis. Furthermore, when given an option by the Arizona Public Retirement System to amortize its UAL in either 30 years or 20 years, the county chose to more, the more financially conservative and burdensome approach to amortizing its UAL in the shorter 20-year timeframe. Next, so, when we talk about the actuarial report, and we talk about unfunded liabilities and the amounts thereof, I'm not sure if you've taken the time to go through that report, but it is fairly substantial, and there's an enormous amount of, you know, statistics in there. This page, for this particular purpose, is one of the more important ones. And this is from your 2019 actuarial report. And here, towards the bottom, we have a line that says, "Unfunded Actuarial Accru, Accru liability for 2019", and that was 10.5. That is a consolidated amount for both your sheriff and your corrections.
Michael, that's $10.5 million?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, what does that really mean? How do we get to that number? The next page is, being a nerd is one of my favorite pages in the presentation. And in order to arrive at that $10.5 million, we request a spreadsheet of projected cash flows provided by the actuarial, and we see those under Sheriff Future Value and Corrections Future Value. Now, those are the amounts that, based on the components of your plan, the members of your plan, the actuaries put in a whole bunch of different formulas and come up with a projected cash flow of what it's going to take to, to get your UAL to zero. And this is in addition to your normal contribution. This is your UAL contribution.
And just, just to be sure, is because they are capped at what they contribute to us, and we have to make up the difference, is that right?
Correct. Of course, if they make more, then, I mean, that would help, and we'll get to that, but generally, what you said is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, if we take the combination of sheriff and corrections, we get a total future value, and that is what your projected contributions curves look like. You'll see that in the red line.
Right.
So, when you hear, you know, hey, our, our UAL is $10.3 million, well, if you look at the red line, and you can see how those projected contributions, you know, increase severely towards the end, the way we get to the $10.5 million is we have to discount that red line by 7.3%. 7.3% is what the actuaries have chosen as your targeted earnings rate in your portfolio investments. So.
Michael, how realistic is 7.3 in this market?
It's been a challenge as of late. It's been a challenge, and there are some graphs in the back that will, will help us see that a little bit more clearly.
And then I have a question on the previous slide.
Yes, sir.
You have a gross unfunded liabilities of, in 2019, of $10,500,000.
Correct.
And what is the current value of what we have invested?
We are waiting on the projections, but I believe they're closer to 11.
2019.
Oh. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Yeah, go ahead, Jennifer, if you know.
I, I, I believe they're, he asked the value of the, of what we had in the poll. So, I think it's the 18.
I believe it's actually, I believe it's actually the 20.
Yeah, 20.
20.8.
Sorry.
I believe it's the 20.8. I'll have to confirm that.
Thank you. Any more questions, Bruce?
Nope.
Okay, please, Michael, proceed.
Okay, so, just real quickly on the next page, the one with the graph. Page seven.
Uh huh.
Okay. So, that red line, when we discount it by the 7.3%, it becomes the blue line.
Okay.
Okay. If we continue to drop that earnings rate, that 7.3%, 5%, 3%, 2%, the closer the red line gets, I'm sorry, the closer the blue line gets to the red line. The more, or let me, let me go the other way. Let's say that PSPRs earns 10%, 15%, then the line moves the opposite way. It goes down. And again, we're going to see on, oh, I put it in here. It's a quote, and we don't have to go back to it, but compounding is extremely important in all aspects of evaluating your UAL, and also in looking at a pension obligation bond to close that gap. Compounding drives this. Let's go to page nine, please. Any questions on that other page?
Gentlemen?
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, pension obligation bonds. If the county was to pursue a POB transaction, what credit would we use? What security would we use? The county currently has an excise tax credit. You do not have a general obligation bond credit. And in speaking with staff, and we can go into detail about this if you'd like, we decided that a certificate of participation is the best financing vehicle to achieve what the county wants in this transaction. So, what is a COP? In effect, it's a leaseback, and it is a transaction that is used by various counties and various cities in Arizona for a long period of time. It's nothing new. It's nothing crazy. It's, it's in effect what most bond transactions are. It's just a complicated loan, and we have a security on this which is going to be a leasehold interest in one of the county's buildings. So, rather than spend too much time on the legalese on this page, if we could go to the next page, and I'll walk you through the diagram of how a COP transaction works. So, the county, once we get close to closing or the day of closing, attorneys will have prepared the, the bonds or the certificates of participation. The county will sign them and will, will give them to the underwriter, who then passes them along to the investors, the one who bought the certificates of participation in the primary market. At that very same time, at closing, the COP investors will send their money to the underwriter, who then sends it to the trustee, who then sends it to the county, and the county has, you know, whatever par amount they sold in their COPs. So, here, approximately $10 to $11 million. Then the county would wire that or send it to their Section 115 trust and would be, depending on, and we can get to the details of a 115 trust in a bit, will decide how the money gets laid out and into what types of portfolios it'll be laid out into. Then, going forward, the debt service payments from this loan will look like lease payments. So, the county, every semi-annual period, July and January, they will pay interest twice on both of those periods, and then they pay principal in July. And those, we more or less back into those amounts as, as to what we needed to finance the transaction, and those are your lease payments, who then go through that same trustee and then pays the bondholders or the COP holders.
So, that, that helps us reduce the outstanding liability, and it makes it much more manageable for the county to pay off the obligation that we currently have because of what's been mandated. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's the intention of this financing vehicle.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay.
Next page, please.
Mr. Chairman, so in essence, what we're talking about doing is we're talking about borrowing money, which we think we'll be able to borrow somewhere between 2.5% and 3.5%?
Yes, correct.
And either, one of two options, either investing it ourselves in government things through this trust or paying the PSPRs system so that the money compounds.
Correct. With earnings.
With earnings.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay, Michael.
Next page, please. Oh, you, we're here, sorry. So, this is an overview of, of what this transaction would look like on a cash differential basis. So, this, this red line is the same red line we saw on page seven. And if we were to issue COPs for the, you know, UAL at 100% so that you're 100% funded, the transaction would look like we see in the table to the top left. We would issue approximately $9.5 million. Again, this is based on the 2019, so the number's going to come up again, but everything else works the same. The actuarial rate is important because that really dictates what the red line looks like at 7.3%. We're assuming 3.5% interest if, in the issuance of this, which is very, very, well, it's high. But for conservative purposes, we chose the 3.5%.
Correct.
And that would get you a transaction where you would have to pay $756,000 a year in debt service payments or lease payments, depending how we want to speak about it. The differential overall would be $8.1 million on a future value basis. And if we discount that, as we typically should, on a present value basis, the difference is $5.5 million. And I call it a cash flow difference. In the vast majority of other presentations, it's called savings. I just want to be clear about that. So, in the past, we've done refinancings for the county, and in those presentations, I've referred to the cash flow difference as savings. The difference there is we have fixed debt that we're refinancing with fixed debt. So, this was never going to change, and in the new refinancing, that debt service is fixed, so it's not going to change, and I can confidently provide to you a chart that shows this is what your savings look like. Here, it's different because the only thing that's fixed in this graph is the debt that we issue for you. That stays the same. Once we issue that debt, your debt service stays the same. Your interest rate stays the same till the end of, so, that's why I'm just a little careful about using savings versus cash flow difference.
Because we have no control over what the return is that PSPRs is going to generate on this $11 million that we're going to forward to them.
I had limited control.
Control, yeah. And if they'd been doing their job all along, there would not be this 30%, 33% shortfall.
Well, there was a lot of factors, too, in 2008 when that, the, that big drop that we had hurt everyone, and then, of course, subsequently, there, they started pushing more and more of, to the cities and the counties to make up for that difference. Even their, their board wasn't fully functional, and there were some questions of the people that were at that pension board, or whatever the state calls it. I guess now it's fully staffed again, maybe, and they have someone in there. But, I mean, at the end of the day, we were left holding the bag. And so, this is probably a method that's legal, that allows us to really be able to manage that debt, even though we're incurring debt, but at least we'll have a stable payment and not have to have all these call-ins at the end of, of the day.
Correct. Chairman Reese, and to that point, let's again talk about, talk about compounding. So, when, when we took those losses in 2008, rather than the county having to pony up that difference immediately, the way this works is the loss goes on to the back end, and now you're paying for that and the difference, plus at a, at a rate.
Yeah.
So, compounding is, is very key in understanding, you know, how, how this transaction works.
Absolutely. And then, as you said, there was a guaranteed increase every year that was given out to the pensioners, right? So, that continued to add to the deal, too, so.
A lot of, a lot of things compiling.
And they finally, I think they finally cut it down, but it was, it's a little high. Great. Any other questions, Bruce?
The only other statement is, is there are other pension funds that are being managed by different, by different groups in the state. Not all of them are facing this severity of shortfall. And this was managed by the state for many, many years before the County Supervisors Association finally advocated to get a seat on that board and to change management. And we were working with the League of City and Towns to do that, to get that, to make these changes. It was a long, hard-fought fight over many years to get this done. So, we're hoping, you know, based on the results of what they've done the last couple of years, that we're going to be able to get a better return, and it's going to be a little more, better managed. But by and large, this shortfall that the taxpayers of the city of, of Santa Cruz County are paying, and this is not just us that's paying this, you have every county in the state of Arizona, you have every city in the state of Arizona, and every town in the state of Arizona that's stepping up to the plate to pay this money that the state fiscally mismanaged, and the state had the, should have the liability to at least participate in some form in this. Yet, once again, we, the taxpayers of Santa Cruz County, will be paying this burden. And if you live in a city, you're paying this burden twice. So, this is, this is one of the really frustrating things about sitting on this dais and looking at these things and having to spend money that we are having to borrow to take care of these challenges, so.
I just want to add a little bit to that. I agree with the comments my colleague Bruce has made. Once again, our state passes on, and unfortunately, as our chairman mentioned, there- Once again, our state passes on, and unfortunately, as our chairman mentioned, there were a lot of variables that added to this, and, and I thank CSA and Craig for getting on top of this, and I had the privilege of being on the executive board that selected the representation for CSA on that board. But I, I wanna thank Jennifer and Finance for taking a proactive approach to this, because if we sit and depend on the state, it's not gonna happen. I think if we work proactively as we are now, I think that's gonna put us in a good position, as some other counties are doing as well. And, and I commend you and I thank you for, for the effort. And, and thanks, Michael, for, for putting this package together, these certificates.
So, yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's crazy, you know, what has been going on, and really when you look at it, the smaller counties in the state have been taking a huge hit. You know, some of the bigger counties like Maricopa and Coconino and Pinal and stuff, they just, you know, raise their property tax a little bit and they're, they can cover some of these costs. We can't do that. And so we're trying to be as fiscally responsible, trying to find a method of, yeah, it is taxpayer dollars. It is through no fault of county government, but through state failures. But at the end of the day, the state mandates that we do this, they might not offer any relief, and we still have those outstanding liabilities that we have to make payments on, so. At least there's, there's options that we're able to do to try to, to minimize a huge impact, rather than having them say, you need to pay this upfront now, you, you're able to spread it out, and, I mean, for us to spread out the, the debt over a certain amount of years to be able to, to have that contribution into the funds, so.
And Chairman Rees, on, on that note, let me just point out a couple of small things on this graph. So when we're talking about the amortization period, it, it's 17 years per the, the 2019 actuarial report, and staff and I had talked about, you know, at, at a minimum, we'll, we'll amortize our COPs at 17 years, potentially maybe shorten it to 15, just depending on, you know, what's affordable, so on and so forth. But we use the level amortization through there. We could have followed that graph, structured it so it's a little bit more uniform to the graph, but this, this seems to be the most conservative. I mean, who wants a house payment that's gonna go up like that? I mean, best to just know what you can afford now and move on accordingly.
Absolutely. Any other questions, comments? If not?
No, sir.
Please, Michael, proceed.
Okay, if we can skip forward one more page, I'm not gonna spend too much time on this, but this is, if you were wondering what PSPRS portfolio looks like, this is it. So you can see how it's been distributed.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in, in going through these POB conversations, you know, a lot of times I've heard, well, you know, PSPRS is not situated like it was in 2008, it's, you know, a lot more diverse, so the chance of it taking a big hit like that is not nearly as high. So that's been an argument, that's why I included this, but let's go to the next page and take a look at some historical earnings rates. So at the top, in the top table, we have a 10-year earnings history, and you can see that we jump around that 7.3%. And if you look at the table below that, which presents it a little differently, we have our 10, 20, and 30-year earnings. 3.5% would be closer to your, your bond rate than your earnings rate.
Right.
One more way to look at earnings or potential earnings is, this is an S&amp;P 500, it's a historical for quite some time, 50 years. And I really would like for you to take a look at some of those bigger numbers, whether they're positive or negative, and just see the fluctuations.
Yeah, wow.
So if we're looking in, let's say, start 2000, negative 10%, next year negative 30 or 13, and then the next year negative 23. Those would be some big hits to take right up front. In compounding, it matters most what you do upfront, what happens to your asset value or your principal value upfront, because it's that on which you're making interest. So just a quick example, let's say that we borrowed $10 million, and the first year, this is just for easy math, let's say the first year we took a 50% hit, that's not a 50% hit on earnings, it's a 50% hit on your asset value. So the next year, let's say that you make 50%, positive 50%, well, 50% on, on 5 million is 2.5, so now you're at 7.5 million. You're still not back at your original asset value.
Yeah.
So you're, it's, it's important to think of this not only as an interest earnings issue, but also your asset value, and that's what's really, I believe, important about your Section 115 trust, is that they realize, and I heard this in one of the first interviews I had with them, and they asked the client, well, how much are you prepared to lose? And, you know, everybody kind of on the call was like, what are you talking about? We're not trying to lose anything. And so the point was, is look, we can structure this in many different ways, we can structure this aggressively, but if you're worried about kind of COVID, the economy right now, maybe it's best that we don't just throw everything in and go for it. Maybe it's best that we layer these investments out, and we layer them out in assets that maybe aren't gonna provide you 10, 15%, but are gonna keep you at a lower percent where, you know, your risks are more manageable, and you protect your asset value. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So just, and just to be fair, you know, clearly there are some great times in here where you, you could have invested, I mean, like, let's say you invested in 2012 to get a 13%, 29%, and 11% return on your asset right off the bat. I mean, compounding, the, the most important part of it is in the earlier side of the curve.
Absolutely.
If you, let's say if you were to do 5% to 7% for 13, 14 years, and you were to take some bigger hits at the end, you've compounded so much positive assets in the front that the, the big hits aren't going to affect you nearly as much.
But, Michael, everything that you're saying right now, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Everything you're saying right now is if we put money, if we borrow the money and we put some of this money into the 115 trust.
That, that's what I'm saying, yes, as opposed to just sending it directly into PSPRS.
As opposed to just making the contribution to PSPRS, hoping that the ship has been righted.
Correct. And, and, and again, you have a little bit more control on how risky you wanna be. I mean, or hey, do we wanna 5% return, do we wanna 8, what are we shooting for? And I think, you know, that, that helps the county.
If you do that, you're losing the compounding effect inside the, inside your pension fund.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, so ultimately, the first three, four years are real critical, man.
The first few years are, right, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, you know, anytime you put money into a stock market, it's, it's, it's risky.
And, and I don't mean to-
And just, just like you can reap great rewards, you can also lose everything, so I think if we put it in something that, that's manageable for us and, and our risk is, is not high, we continue to make those payments into our, our 115, and from there draw payments into the pension fund, is that how we're gonna work it?
At, you know, at the times you believe, you know, you should.
Right.
So I'm, in summary, I'm not trying to scare you away here, I just-
Well, no, I mean, look, Michael, I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it's a liability that we're stuck with, and we need to, as a county, find a way to fund it. We know we owe the money because it's, you know, our police officers, our corrections officers have, have earned that right to that pension, but, you know, when, when they cap, when even if they make more money and you put in a little more, you're still having to pay more than anybody else for those pension funds. And so, you know, we wanna make sure that we comply, but we also wanna make sure that, while I hate doing that to our taxpayers, it's something that we need to do to kind of, just kind of take an easy, what is it, road, to make sure that the, that, that liability is funded, so. Jennifer?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Vazquez is outlining what can happen to the money once we do the finance, refinancing or the COPs. This public hearing is to talk about the COPs. Staff's recommendation as of today would not be that you leave that in Section 115 trust for multiple years, if any. So we have time between now and when we do the financing to decide exactly what we wanna do with that money. As you all know, PSPRS, and you've talked about today, has a much better board, their actuarial assumptions are getting better, there is still room for improvement, and that's why we would take advantage of the Section 115 trust, because they have made some more changes moving forward that will help that PSPRS, that contribution directly to PSPR, PSPRS be more stable. So the Section 115 trust is new and something that we can take advantage of for the next one, two, maybe three years, while those actuarial amounts change within PSPRS. So I don't wanna get too hung up, I mean, Mr. Vazquez, we do need to understand all the risks that we might take in a Section 115 trust, so it's a very good exercise, but I'll be having further meetings individually with you all on what staff's recommendation.
Well, I mean, today is just a presentation, I mean, we, we're not going to make this decision today. And, and while I understand that, and that you're, you're giving us this different option, I mean, at the end of the day, it could be a combination of, of both.
Yes, sir.
It, we might, may not put all our eggs in one basket, so to say, but once we look at that and we're ready to pull the trigger as a county, and pardon my, my French on that one, but once we're ready to make that investment, at that time, staff will come to us. They will recommend, make a recommendation, it could be a combination of one or the other, and then we move forward with that. So I, I mean, yeah, it's, it's great that we're getting the presentation, and, and I understand that, Jennifer, too, and, and so I guess the saving grace in this is that there is an option. Is that the only option? You know, maybe because of what has happened or has transpired at the state and the people that have been put on the board that are probably more fiscally responsible in managing the investments, then we need to look at that as well before we decide, you know, we're gonna go here, or if we go two years into the 115 and then pull it all out and pay it off, so. Great, thank you. Please, Michael.
If we can go to page 17, please, that's a summary. So potential advantages, first and foremost, we can stabilize that red line, your UAL projected contribution, and by doing so, achieve present and future value savings and cash flows. Potential disadvantages, we now put leverage into your pension risk profile. PSPRS may not achieve, you know, the rate they need to, they may not, you know. And ultimately, this is analogous to maybe entering into home equity loan and, and using that money to invest in the stock market. Other, other takeaway points is, why are we looking at POBs right now? Well, rates are at historical lows, especially taxable rates, which we would have to use for the COP transaction. That said, it's, it's kinda like the boat analogy, where, you know, all boats rise with the water or lower with the water, same thing. If we're borrowing at lowest rates, it's gonna be harder to make those higher rates in earnings, you know? We borrow low, we earn low, to that effect. Last one is, and I made this point earlier, is protecting your portfolio, portfolio's asset value is, is important.
Absolutely.
Next page. Next steps would be, identify sizing options. Do we wanna fund the UAL at 75%, 100%? Which, which county assets will we use for the securities or for the asset bucket of the COPs? And initiate the COP transaction.
Okay. So it says there, early December closing, so we eventually, when, more or less, do you think you will make a recommendation to the board, Jennifer? And I know this is just on the presentation, it could be before, or maybe it is, so you have any idea at this time, and I don't wanna put you maybe too much on the spot.
Oh, no, that's fine. And we've got a closing date of December 16th, so you're asking me on a recommendation on whether to deposit directly into PSPRS or Section 115? Well, we're, we're gonna be talking about that, you know, in the months to come, we're gonna be, I'll be working with Mr. Vazquez to see what the market looks like, I mean, we can do it-
So you don't, so you don't have all those details ready when you're gonna, okay, that's-
We don't, and it'll be closer to that December 16th date, I mean, if, I don't know, the market's doing great, that might, you know, have us really reconsider doing that, putting it in Section 115 trust versus PSPRS, so. CSA is gonna give us a presentation next week as well on that, so we can get some more information on, on what they've been doing in those monthly meetings. So we'll just be watching Supervisor Reese between the next few months.
Thank you, I appreciate, I love, look, I mean, eventually you, you will make a presentation and we'll have to decide, so. Michael, please, continue.
So the, the last page for this presentation is just a timetable to give you an idea of some of the salient steps in the financing. This, this financing is a little bit longer than usual, but that is because it's a new credit for the county and we have to go through a couple of public hearings, public, the public auction being the second one, and that takes time.
Great, thank you. So at this time, any members of the public have any comments? Mr. Coppola.
Chairman, I'm just curious as to-
Yeah, come to recording you.
Manuel Coppola, publisher of Nogales International. Chairman Reese, I'm just wondering what efforts are going on at the legislative level to get some relief from the state and what kind of odds we have of that happening?
Jennifer, if you'd just start us off and then we'll, we'll chime in.
Yeah, I mean, all I can say is that, as, as I think Supervisor Reese has mentioned, all three board members, we've been very active in getting on the PSPRS board and in helping some of the assumptions that have been made in the past. For example, there was a 4% payroll growth assumption, and when you look back over the last 10 years, I don't think there's a county in the state of Arizona that historically every year gave 4% in raises to their correction officers. The interest rate at 7.3% that Mr. Vazquez pointed out, that's been lowered from 7.9%. So we are working with this, with the state and the PSPRS board to make those assumptions more realistic.
And, and the other thing too, to call you is, when we get together as an association, we tried to push for legislation to help us monetarily and, you know, it's, it's, it's a hard nut to crack, and, you know, trying to get relief from a problem that was caused from them. And, you know, we lobby the state legislature as much as we can, and sometimes we get a little bit of relief, but most time, their priorities are not our priorities, and as hard as we try, it's very hard to get some relief. I know that they've allowed certain options in there, that if we have funds from other, that are healthy funds, that we can use them to help offset some of our other costs, but other than that, Manny, it's, it's, it's very hard. I mean, it's, you sit down with them, we have the CSA staff take all the numbers from the different counties, especially the small ones, and unfortunately, sometimes we get nowhere. And so that's, you know, it's like pushing a boulder uphill, and, you know, they keep piling onto it, and it makes it tougher every year for us, so.
Yeah, I don't wanna take up a lot of time, but has a referendum been discussed at all?
You mean to pass some type of bond for the public to do that? I don't know that we have discussed that necessarily. I don't know if any other community in the state has done that, are you aware of that, Michael?
To this point, I'm not aware of, of an issuer in Arizona that has gone to the voters for geoauthorization. I can get you a more clear answer on that, definitive answer.
Thank you. The city of Prescott, last year increased their sales tax to address this situation. Flagstaff mortgaged their buildings to address this situation.
Is that what we're talking about doing?
Yep.
We're talking about- We're talking about mortgaging.
Yeah, it's, it's just borrow the money and, and do a, a lease buyback. So, you know, so we use our building as collateral. We borrow the money, and then we pay a lease payment of 700 and something thousand a year for 17 years, something like that is kind of what I got, so.
Thank you. It's unfortunate, Mr. Coppola, that the legislature has not made a priority of stabilizing the pension fund of law, local law enforcement officers and correction officers. It's just not been their priority. And it's not that we have not, the County Supervisors Association has brought it up to them time and time again. But in their grand scheme of things, as you can see in this year's budget, they have different priorities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, Michael, thank you so much for your presentation today. We really appreciate it. Look forward to seeing what else you, Jennifer, and the financial team come up to make a recommendation for the board, so. Any other final comments, gentlemen? If not, Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here.
Look forward to seeing you soon with whatever the final recommendation is, so. Thanks. At this time, the chair will take, may entertain a motion to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene regular session.
Second?
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're back. Item 10. Discussion, possible action to approve a tolling agreement with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. That's from, take care, Michael. Good seeing you. So, Jesus. Good morning, my friend.
Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good morning.
This, good morning. This tolling agreement is, it gives, I'll just read it to you. It says, "The Public Works Department performed maintenance on the Ruby Road Bridge. This work resulted in the needs, in the need of an after-the-fact permit to comply with the Clean Water Act." The tolling agreement suspends the course timeframe for enforcement to the county, basically, and it extends it. We're complying, and it was something that we need to address.
Okay, not a problem. Chair, entertain a motion to approve. Hear a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
Item 11. Discussion, possible action to approve agreement number 2019205 with Sierra Auction Management, Inc., for all auction services. Anything in order?
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to thank the Public Works Department. This has been a project that is a long time in coming on how to, for the, help the county get rid of excess, excess equipment, instead of just storing it in every free space that we have, which we are running out of free space quickly. So, thank you very much, Public Works, for coming up with this option.
Right, good. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 12 has been tabled to our next meeting. Item 13. Discussion, possible action to approve contract with, what is it, Car, Carshaft Technologies Corporation to provide 12 months of Acela SAS environmental software and related services for environmental health inspectors and regulated, and regulated establishments. What's this, Jeff?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a, a software that'll help us do our, our annual inspections, as well as a software that'll help us be more online portals, that they can do all their submittals through online, pay, pay everything online and so forth. Won't have to come into the office. It's more friendly for the citizens to use.
Great, that's great.
And it's all funded by grants from the FDA as well as the state.
Well, perfect. That was the next question. Good. So, so there is a motion and a second?
No.
Okay, so, okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, no further discussion or comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 14. Discussion, possible action to approve grant agreement with A.D. Aeronautics Division 4A. Number E, number E2S1H-01C for airfield electrical upgrade for rails, Phase 1 project. Or is it Reilis? Reilis. Anyway, R.E.I.L.S. Item B, E2S1, looks like I01C for the airfield electrical upgrade rotating beacon project. Everything in order?
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Under discussion. I, I want to thank Mary for hustling for these grants. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. And, and we, we, we are in for it for 2.5% or less? Or is it? 7%?
Yeah, 10, 10%.
Okay, so 90% is picked up through the grant. Okay, good. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 15. Discussion, possible action to approve grant agreements with the Federal Aviation Administration for American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of $32,000. Chair entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, this, will this go towards that, Mary? Or is this a different project?
This is a different project. It's the third pandemic-related grant we've gotten, and so it's all good.
Awesome.
It's no match.
Mm-hmm. Good job. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 18. Discussion, possible action to approve contract agreement number 20-031-25 with the Arizona Department of Corrections Rehabilitation and Reentry to provide general maintenance and landscape for the county. Chair entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 17, tabled to our next meeting. Item 18. Discussion, possible action to approve a contribution agreement with Arizona Minerals for financially supporting, is this on the executive? Okay. So we'll move on to number 19. Discussion, possible action to approve proclamations, A, in support of Mexicans' Independence Day on September 16th of 2021, and B, designating September 20th through the 24th, 2021 as National Gear Up Week. Chair entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Hear a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 20. Boy, it is a long one. Discussion, possible action to award bid number B-03-21-CO40 for 2021, 2022 legal publications and advertisement. Do we really want to give that to the international?
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, Manny, I didn't see you there.
Is there a discount for the phone ringing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're going to get a 20% discount because your phone went off in the middle of the meeting, so. So, Madam Clerk, is everything in order on the bid? If you will open it, please, because we can't award it without having the bid opening, so. Alma, please.
Yes, good morning, once again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We did receive one bid that was submitted by the Nogales International, and I will open up the bid now.
Great, thank you.
The drum roll, please.
Drum roll, one.
As long as we don't rip the bid, it's okay. Okay.
So, the proposal leaves the current rate intact at $5.75 per column inch, plus a 10% processing fee for our new uploading platform, for a total of $6.32 per column inch. This new sys, this new system markedly increased efficiency in getting ads published, generating affidavits, and billing. The proposed rate, including the administrative fee, is still 13% lower than our regular open rate of $7.15 per column inch for 2021 to 2022.
Great. Chair entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, and just under discussion, and, and I know that, maybe I've asked this before, but since we only have one newspaper provider locally, and could we do a sole source? And it's something to look at. I mean, not right now, but maybe in the future. So, you think we have to bid by state law?
I would need to double check, but I'm pretty sure that we need to go out to bid.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I would just say, because I know it takes time from everyone to prepare the bid, and, and it's only just the same one bid every time, so.
It's just a little stressful for Manny.
Well, it is, especially. Yeah, and then your phone goes off, and, yeah, so then we're hearing about sports betting and whatever. I don't know what's going on. But anyway, there is a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Tokayo, and the international. Item 21. Discussion, possible action to approve bond for duplicate warrant number 2-099857 in the amount of $142.31 dated 7/7/2021, payable to Maya M. Donnelly. Everything in order, Madam Clerk?
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item number 22. Tax valuation adjustment A115-10-372, and B10523072. Everything in order? Chair entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 23. Discussion, possible action to approve certificate of removal and abatement of taxes and/or penalties from A through double zero, it looks like.
Double O.
Or double O. Chair entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll go on to item 24. Approval of minutes of 8:17 2021. Chair entertain a motion. Move to approve. Hear a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 25. Demand. Supervisor Maleta.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $1,427,576.74, of which $466,724.47 are from the general fund.
Hear a second.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will now go back to item G, executive session. Chair entertain a motion for us to recess and convene into executive session. Item 1, pursuant to IRS 3843103A3, and 4, discussion and consultation for legal advice and direction on contribution agreement with Arizona Minerals. And item 2, pursuant to IRS 3843103, 431.03A3, and 4, discussion, consultation, and/or direction regarding the Cooperative Forest Road Service Agreement with the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service, Coronado National Forest Service. Chair entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. Second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. We will now recess this meeting and convene into executive session. Where are we going to meet? So, chair entertain a motion then. Oh, are you on yet one? Chair entertain a motion then to adjourn our executive session and convene regular session.
So move.
Second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now going to go to action item 18. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, discussion, possible action to approve a contribution agreement with Arizona Minerals to financially support professional services and/or agreed-upon projects. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
Hear a second.
A second.
Any discussion, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is that an aye?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Madam Manager, I believe we concluded the people's business, and the last item is adjournment. Chair entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Hear a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we are adjourned.